Welcome, everybody, to the August 11th, 2019 meeting of Van Wert City Council. We're going to begin with the invocation provided by Pastor Keith Sauer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, if everybody would please stand.
Heavenly Father, we are so thankful this evening, as you granted each of us grace to be in attendance, and Father equipped us not only with the call to public service and ministry, but also equipped us, God, with your wisdom and understanding to be able to handle the people's business, handle it successfully, compassionately, and equip ourselves well. So, Lord, we're thankful tonight for the break in the weather, thankful, God, for the rain that has already come and will soon come again, thank you for the refreshing of our crops and lawns. For this evening, Father, we give our attention to the business of the city, we pray for continuing wisdom and guidance, and, Father, we do all these things to bring you honor and glory. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Veronica, please roll call.
Mr. Markward.
President.
Mr. Penton.
Here.
Mrs. Mergie.
Here.
Mr. Straley.
Here.
Mr. Marshall.
Here.
Mr. Engler.
Here.
Mr. Trichu.
Here.
Everybody should have a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Today's August 12th. I didn't even catch it. I apologize. So, aside from changing the date on the agenda to August 12th, are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda, please?
Move to accept as amended.
Move to accept as submitted. Mr. Trichu. Seconded by Mr. Straley. Please call the roll.
Mr. Trichu?
Yes.
Mr. Straley?
Yes.
Mr. Markward?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Engler?
Yes.
Everybody also should have a copy or have been presented the minutes from our last meeting dated July 22nd, 2019. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Move to accept as submitted.
Mr. Trichu, move to accept. Seconded by Mrs. Mergie. Please call the roll.
Mr. Trichu?
Yes.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Markward?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Straley?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Engler?
Yes.
All right. Comments, communications, and petitions. We were all provided, and there are printed copies in front of everybody, letters from several contractors. I just want to acknowledge them, that we have them now. During Mr. Marshall's report for health, service, and safety, I would like to discuss the, I guess, building department information. So, just to, I guess, right now, just acknowledging that we do have those letters and we can discuss them here. But are there any other comments, communications, and petitions to come before council, from council members? From public? No? Okay. Administrative reports. The mayor, Mr. Jerry Mazur.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening. However, I would like to thank Ken for his work on accumulating information from the contractors locally, and I'm looking forward to discussion related to that subject when that comes up.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions from council for the mayor? From the public? Thank you, Jerry. Safety Service Director, Mr. Jay Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. President. And that means you're going to handle Stacy's request during that discussion.
I am too. I'm going to read her response.
Okay.
She asked me simply to read a message from her.
Okay. Perfect. First thing to report, there's a CRA agreement with Jimmy Collins operating as the addition LLC that has, the dates at which the project was supposed to be completed has passed. So, we're making a request to change these dates in this agreement, which I think would mean council has to pass an ordinance to allow the mayor and I to sign that.
We'd have to pass an amended agreement, yeah.
Yes. I'll pass this on, pass that on by you.
Next meeting's fine?
Next meeting, yes.
So, a motion to prepare that or something? Yeah, we're going to need a motion of economic development, probably more economic development.
Just extending the dates till next September, September of '20, September 30th, '20.
Okay. You already have it highlighted in here, okay?
Yeah.
Got you.
Secondly, tomorrow, we're opening bids on the dislaying of paving, the water tower painting, and the floor replacement project at the wastewater plant. And this coming Saturday, John Brown Road's going to be paved and back open again, part of that Vision Park project. And then also Saturday, they'll be paving Vision Drive and then finishing up production on Monday. So, next week, that'll be, paving will be done minus the grass seeding, so that project will be behind us. And that's all I have to report.
I saw metal posts in the parking lot south of First United Methodist Church. Is that for central avenues?
Central.
Central.
Yeah, sorry. Glad you brought that up. After months and months of waiting on posts. Two posts that were shipped out of either Wisconsin or Nebraska, I don't know where these came from, actually arrived today with the flange ends not welded to them that goes on the pole. So, it's, I'm like, you've got to be kidding me. You shipped them 1,000 miles and then how does it get out of the lot? So, now they're back at our place, they're going to be shipped back, either replaced or welded and shipped back. So, that just delays it probably a month to get these posts back.
All right. Well, I apologize for bringing it up.
No, it's okay. I'm sorry. I included my report.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
Any questions for the Safety Service Director for council?
Yeah. Jay, South Washington Street, where the gas company, you know, and then they resurfaced it, and it's already dipped down?
They are scheduled to get back here and redo those.
Okay.
The contractor did that, yeah. He was scheduled like a weekday on Friday, but we told him, you don't want to do that work on a Friday.
Yeah.
So, he's looking for a better date.
Okay.
Jeff, anything else from council? From the public? Oh.
I saw they were putting in the light there at Washington Central.
Yeah.
Was that going to be done?
That's what he was talking about. That's the poles that I...
The poles that the arms came.
Right.
It's, we don't know. The contractor's talking with the factory, so they got to work out shipping and ship them back and ship them back again, so we don't, next council meeting.
Not all of them.
Yes. Imagine that. So, I'll have a better report next meeting.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Auditor, Mrs. Martha Dye.
I have the July 31st bank reconciliation, the first page of the report, which I believe I allegedly sent this out to everyone, but I don't think there was an attachment, if anyone noticed.
That's correct.
Veronica's the only one that looked at it. So, the attachment that you didn't get, we have $12.4 million on the books and $12.4 million in the various bank accounts and investments. This is the cash position report, the column titled "Unexpendited Balance," that's the cash balance in all the funds, which they all have a positive balance, which is required. Nothing really extraordinary on the revenue side, other than I'd like to see general fund revenues increase a little bit more than what they are. But general fund revenues are $33,000 behind where we were last year. The tax administrator gave you the income tax report, total income tax, which would be general fund, police and fire, safety, and the street fund. We're $41,000 ahead of where we were last year. Not sure we're going to meet our projected revenue number.
Was that a, we projected two?
Yeah.
Okay. Two percent increase.
It's going to be tight.
Okay.
Year-to-date revenues are 3.8 million, well, okay, 3,861. Expenses, 3,803. So, we actually have taken in $57,000 more than what we've spent. Like I said, nothing really out of the ordinary, other than income tax revenues are not increasing quite at the pace we thought they were, but I don't think it'll cause us any problem this year. Going forward, we'll have to wait and see what happens. But one thing I do want to point out is this reconciliation is something apparently the county does not do. That's why they are having the problems that they are having partially. But I think this whole situation just gives us all the more reason to pursue charter government.
Yes.
Because the biggest thing, and Mr. Moser highlighted this in his article in the paper, is you don't have any power over your elected officials once they're elected. You can boot them out at the end of their term, but those terms of the county are four-year terms. Our terms here, other than council, are four-year terms. So, you have four years.
And I can't fire you when you make a mistake.
You can't do anything. And the other big thing is you can end up with people in those positions who have absolutely no experience, no education, no prior knowledge of the kind of work that they're going to do. So, if you go to charter, you get to hire somebody, and you get to look at their credentials, and you get to, you know, judge them on merit, which we have, one of the girls in the utilities office is going to retire at the end of the year. We are training now for a utilities clerk. We're going to have five months to train a utilities clerk. When I leave, you step in one day, day one, and you better hit the ground running. It doesn't make any sense. So, I just think the situation that the county's in just gives us all the more reason that we need to push for charter government and try to educate the public on what that does. Because you, I mean, if I never balanced the books, and I never came to a meeting, and I never paid the bills, and payroll was late, and you really can't do anything about it, which is...
Crazy.
Yes, crazy. Absolutely crazy.
Martha, I actually had, somebody asked me the question about charter government this weekend, and I said, all you have to do is look at what's happening right now. It's a case study on why it would be good for us to go to charter government.
Well, it's an unfortunate circumstance that the county's in, and we don't want to be in a mess like that.
Yes.
The tax administrator did put in all your mailboxes her first quarterly report on the credit cards. Since we had to pass a credit card policy earlier in the year, that's one of the requirements that she does a quarterly report. I think it just lists who has cards and maybe what their balance or what their limits are.
Credit limit.
I do have a high limit on my card, and no, Mr. Tomlinson, I did not buy a new car.
Well, I just want to drive it.
I pay the workers' comp premium with a credit card, because if you pay it by, like, January 1st or 2nd, you get a rebate on that premium, which our workers' comp premium is close to $100,000. So, we put it on a credit card at the end of December and get that discount, and that's why my card has a high limit on it.
You get airline points and stuff, too?
No. No, you're not allowed to do that. Not allowed to do that.
Obviously, I'm joking. I'm just trying to lighten the mood.
Although, we do have a rewards card, which is allowed, and then with this new credit card policy and the law that changed, you'll get an annual report on our rewards, which, I mean, the last couple of years, we've used those rewards to buy some food for our Christmas dinner that we have in the fire department, so nothing too extravagant. So, you'll get a report at the end of there. So, that's all I have.
All right. Any questions from council for the auditor? Jerry?
Martha, would you mention the hotel motel tax come in this month? I think it would be good to put that...
Hotel motel tax, I don't have the numbers. It was down from last year, is all that.
It's only slightly down.
Slightly down, yeah. With that, that's what we fund. By statute, we have to fund the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and then we fund Main Street, economic development, the airport, and other...
CIC sometimes.
CIC sometimes, other things that we can afford to. So, you hate to see that. Last year was a record-breaking year.
But I think this year, we're going to be on target for somewhere $150,000 to $160,000.
Should be.
Whatever it looks like.
Should be. Well, we're fortunate that we have some decent hotels.
Yeah, and he's renovating that one up there.
Yep.
A small fortune, too.
Yeah, so...
Any questions for the auditor from the public? Thank you, Martha. Law Director, Mr. John Hatcher.
Yes. Couple of things going on in the law director's office. One, we're taking action against a party that knocked out a concrete pole there at the corner of Main and Washington Street there on the, what would that be, the northeast corner?
Northwest.
Northwest corner, pardon me. Pardon me. I'm getting my directions incorrect. The northwest corner. We're trying to make sure that the party that damaged that pole fixes that pole, and we're working on that diligently. I guess, a question, that being Lincoln Highway coming off of 127, is there some way to keep semis from, because every time a semi tries to turn right onto Main Street...
It's not Lincoln Highway, it's State Route 118.
Oh, so that has to be approved through the state?
Yeah.
Because that's just a nightmare.
Oh, I know.
I mean, every time I walk up and down that street, you see people in the turn lane have to back up, and it's a miracle more accidents where things don't get damaged at that corner.
Well, it's a shame. You can see guys in big rigs get through there just fine, and the next guy runs over the frickin' post.
I understand. And it's not the first time that's happened, either.
No, no, no.
Part two of my report, House Bill 57 recently passed through the state legislature regarding hemp, I believe, because of the minimal amount of THC that is in most hemp, I think it's .03 percent, or is it either .3 or .03. The fact that the police departments do not have tests that can give you a percentage amount of anything they confiscate that's alleged marijuana and what the THC level is, their NIK test kits that they've had for years only show a presumption of whether it's present or not present. Because we do not have the testing equipment, at this point in time, the police department will not be writing citations for possession of marijuana, at least in minor misdemeanor amounts, amounts that are larger than that, that come under the purview of the county prosecutor. That would be up to her on whether or not she wants to send those to BCI and I to be tested. Because right now, you can't do any field tests on them to figure out how much THC is in them and whether or not it's an illegal or illegal amount. Because of that, the police department will be confiscating that as contraband only. They will not be citing for that. So, what does that mean? That means municipal court numbers for criminal cases will probably, until this gets figured out, will probably be down, probably affect fine and court cost numbers from the financial end. But the police officers have been, they've been told about this, they've been made aware, the attorney general's letter from the attorney general's office has been forwarded to the sheriff, the chief of police, it's been circulated to all the officers. I'm just letting everybody here at council know, just so if you hear anything on the grapevine about all of this, that's what they're talking about. And that's kind of popped up in the middle of last week, so that's why I'm just letting everybody know now. Is there any questions on that, or any questions on the issue on the northwest corner of Main and Washington? Yes, Mr. Jerry?
Speaking of that pole, one of the panels on the pole was held together by duct tape. It's fixed now.
Okay. Well, I'm just talking about, I talked about the concrete pillar that's kind of sitting like that.
I'm just thinking, we must have just hit one, not the thing loose, and then put it back together with duct tape. It's actually fixed now.
Yeah, well, it's, that pole there takes a beating. Yeah, so, unfortunately, but this time, unlike other times, we know who did it, so we're taking care of that issue. All right. Thank you all very much.
Any questions for the law director from council? From the public? Thank you, John. Moving on to committee reports, health, service, and safety, and Mr. Bill Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a report tonight that there are 22 open code violations, seven of which are new. I'll be reviewing with Mr. Hatcher and Mr. Lawson where we are on those that are open longer than a two-month period, just to bring an update as to where we are. And hopefully, at that point, I can report on that at the next council meeting. That's all I have.
Okay. So, as alluded to in the comments, communications, petitions, Mr. Markward provided, how many? Five? Communication from five different, I guess, building, commercial building individuals... Sorry. Contractors, thank you. In basically what we're talking about, we are talking about, and we've mocked up Resolution Number 1906034. We have not introduced it. We have actually not even asked for it to be prepared. So, but we asked the law director to mock it up, just so that we would have something on paper. The impetus behind this is we've been asked by the county, basically the question, if the county decides to contract with either, you know, another entity outside of the state of Ohio, would the city of Van Wert be inclined to, and that means council, be inclined to create a subdivision of a building department underneath the county's building department? Everybody was provided those letters, and I'm assuming everybody read them. This afternoon, I received an email from Stacy Adam, who was originally the one that brought this to council, you know, was asked to bring this to council from the commissioners. And since she unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, she asked me to simply read her thoughts, and so here it is. It's quote, "Currently, the city of Van Wert has a single option for their commercial building permit and inspection process. For those communities with no local building department, the default is that all projects are approved through the state. What we have done is identified an alternative solution to be considered. We have conducted an informational meeting inviting all township trustees and the mayor of each city and village jurisdiction. We have had or are in the process of conducting informational meetings with each and every city and village council in the county. As the option is being considered, I would suggest the following, and there are three bullet points. First bullet point, schedule an informational meeting with local contractors. Second bullet point, solicit feedback from counties that had been serviced by the state but made a decision to create a local building department serviced by a third party. Get their feedback on what they've actually experienced. Is it better, worse, or the same? If they could go back in time, would they make the same decision again? And then the third bullet point, solicit feedback from large commercial contractors that have experienced managing projects both through the state and a third-party building department. Get their feedback on what they've actually experienced. Is it better, worse, or the same? And she concludes, "Unlike our current position, this option provides the city and county of Van Wert a choice, a choice that we don't have today. Once the council has this feedback, I feel they will be able to make an informed decision on what is best for Van Wert." And then she asks for my feedback after our meeting tonight. I guess I would like, Ken, you're the one that reached out to several contractors?
I sent an email.
Okay. Four of them? Five of them?
Well, I was pleased with the meeting we had when the folks from Miami County were here. Up until that night, I really didn't know that was even an option, so I found that to be very useful. And I thought of it, it's sort of like a job interview, that they were asking for us to hire them, so to speak. So, I thought, well, the next phase is check references. And I noticed when the folks from Miami were here, there were a couple of names on there of local people from Van Wert County. So, I thought, well, there's probably some more that have some experience. Not that everybody would have experience with all three of them, but maybe some would. So, since permits go through Bill Lawson, I talked to him, and I thought, you know, I don't want, if there's 100 or somebody who hardly works in Van Wert County, but just maybe some people. So, that was that letter to explain how that kind of happened. He gave me seven that he thought perhaps would have experience with, at least a couple, perhaps all three of them. So, I sent an email to them, and in addition, well, five of them that had emailed listings. So, I sent to those five, plus Anderson Architects and the folks at Alexander Bevout, because their contact information was in the packet that Allen County had given us. So, they were, some responded, some didn't. The ones that did, I gave you attachment. And then, over the weekend, we got a couple of articles forwarded to us...
Yes.
...from a while back, and I believe the article in there was dated February something, listed six corporations, companies down closer to Miami County, which, of course, they were gone for the weekend, so I've only gotten a response from one of them late this afternoon. I sent out two emails, two their emails of the ones that had it on their website, and so far, haven't really heard except for the one. So, I tried to print that out for tonight. So, that was what made that come about, because I just felt like it was, you know, up until late June, probably a lot of us didn't know that much about it. I know I did.
Okay. You go.
You go. Is that what I was talking about earlier?
Yes.
I just want to share an experience I had with, I was in Bevout here recently, involved with a project in town, just could not get inspections done for some reason, don't know why, what was going on, but eventually just turned up Sarah and said, can you please help us? We need our electrical, mechanical, structural, the fire, the fire chief to come through and sign off, and all that. And right before the meeting tonight, one week ago, when I asked her to help, she just said that we have final occupancy, certificate of final occupancy. In one week, she was able to get through all those inspections. I thought that was probably the first commercial project I'd ever been involved in, but I thought it was pretty fast.
That was through the state, yes.
Was that through the state?
Yes.
So, prior to you talking to her, you were doing it all yourself? It was not my project. I was basically out here kind of just, what can I do to make this happen? Oh, because you wanted to sell. No, no, it wasn't a sale, just helping a friend. So, it wasn't yours? No, not mine, no. But went to her and just said, can you please help us get this done? And one week, it all took. I just wondered if the friend, were they working by themselves and didn't know what to do? They hired someone else. Okay. Someone other than them, other than Alexander Bevout.
So, here's where we sit, as alluded to last, in the last meeting and the meeting before that, whenever we've had these conversations. We still, City of Van Wert still is the linchpin on whether or not the county is, you know, without the City of Van Wert, the county will not be in a position to contract with Allen County or Miami County or anybody. It would basically be stay with the state. So, and if you guys see another way forward, please let me know. But my thought is, we have, and I don't know that everybody's had a chance to read everything. So, my thought is this, we have a resolution, okay, that everybody has, everybody should have all of this information, and Ken is waiting on some other information that he could share with us, assuming he gets it in the next couple of weeks.
Because it's their choice whether to respond.
Correct. I would like to, this seems to have taken longer than I thought it would, I would like to get this, give them an answer. So, my plan is, two weeks from now, I'm going to ask for this resolution to be introduced by Health Service and Safety, and if it's positive, you know, if the vote is yes, that basically means from council that we are going to become a sub-department in the county, and we will, the county will then contract with either Miami or Allen. That's not our choice. We can provide them input, but if council wants to do that, then we will vote yes. If council decides, the City of Van Wert wants to stay with the state and keep everything as it is, then if we simply vote no on the resolution, it stops at that point, and that would be our answer.
Excuse me?
Yes.
There's an update on Miami County. I believe they now have plumbing covered, whereas before, they were not providing the plumbing inspection.
plumbing inspection.
Okay.
And prior to you go-
Did you get, I didn't get that information.
Well, I think it was verbal, so I'm, you know, I got it from Stacy.
Can you verify and let us know?
Do it through Stacy. She, she gave me that. But before we make a final decision on whether we be a sub-department of the county, I think we ought to know which way the county is going to go.
I would agree. When you said it's not our decision, it would be up to the county, I would-
Well, I, I simply meant they're the ones signing the contract.
So, you said they are the ones that are going to decide who they're going to go with?
Well, in other words, let's just make up a scenario.
Let's find out who it is.
Let's say we wanted Miami, and the county said they wanted Allen.
Correct.
We wouldn't have to say, well, nothing we can do about it.
Okay. We could still say no?
I will-
Well, another clarification, I'm pretty sure when the folks from Allen County were here, was they said they wouldn't have to be all or nothing, that they could, and have, like, for example, just take middle point and not have to have them. So-
Correct.
I don't think that should cloud our decision.
Correct.
To think that we're ruining it for everyone else if we choose not to.
Correct.
With regard to Stacy's letter requesting her, her three bullet points, I think it'd be a good idea to call some of the other counties. I've spoken to St. Mary's, and I've spoken to Waltham, Connecticut, and they're using one of the two vendors, and they've had pretty good luck with it. Now, I haven't spoken to the building department, but I would suggest that'd be a good idea to follow up on that.
Okay. So, what I will do is, I will verify the plumbing question with Stacy for Miami County. I will see if the county commissioners have a leaning one way or the other, that they are willing to share with us. And then I will, I will communicate that information. Any other?
When Allen County was here, when I asked them about services they could not provide, they said they were not licensed for plumbing yet. I don't know if that's the one you're speaking of?
They were both in the same state. They were in flux on plumbing. But since then, Stacy has advised me that Miami is now cert, has a certified plumbing inspection system.
Okay.
And John O'Verfley.
Yeah, the guy from Allen County said he was working on something, but I couldn't remember.
Yeah, he said, I think he said basically within the next several months, he would have it, I think.
Yeah, he was looking for his own certification.
Yeah.
And that's got to come. I mean, I think, outside of this room discussion, if we're going to change, that entity has to bring everything to the table.
Right.
Can't piece parts out.
Okay.
And there's, there's no, somebody alluded to an option, you, you can sign up with Miami, but you still have the-
That was, that was Allen County.
-opportunity to go back to the state. That, that's not accurate. You have one or none, one or the other. You don't have both.
So, or is, anybody have a better option going forward, other than my, you know, the voting on the resolution two weeks from today? I mean, does that sound like it?
Well, I still haven't heard a complaint about the state, you know, from everything I've read, from people so far, that they don't have a problem with them. So, I, I don't know why we would change, or what, what is the benefit?
I'd like to couple on to that. I spoke to a small electrical contractor who basically does commercial work, and he is, he expressed to me that he's never had a problem calling electrical, for an electrical inspection from the state. So, it's not written, but it's another verbal input.
Yeah, it was, when the folks from Miami County were here, since I don't deal with this, I thought, well, this sounds pretty good. And they talked about a lot of things. But the four things I remembered was electronic submission, video inspection, get inspected very quickly, oftentimes the next day, and if you wanted to, pay a credit card. And so, they didn't actually say this, I don't know if this was your impression. I was thinking, oh, this is going to be an improvement over the way things are currently done. But then the feedback I got made it sound like all four of those things are already possible, and so that it wouldn't be an added feature.
In conjunction with that, Ken, I talked to one of the departments last week, and it seems that with this competition on the horizon, it's pushing the state to get a little bit faster and up to speed on some of the later technology. So, you know.
Yeah, I, I really hate to use, but you probably noticed, I tried to put as much in writing from people as possible, because I really don't want you to have to rely on me saying, ah, talk to a guy, you know, that type of thing. But one of the guys from Shelby County, who said he didn't want to put anything in writing, was because he still has to work with them, only they are in multiple counties. But he did say, he thought that Miami County and the state were very similar, and that his impression was they watch each other. Whoever gets the good idea first, the other one makes sure they adopt it. And so, he, he called them a virtual tie, just in his dealings. So, that's another one that I just-
Okay.
Wish I could give it to you in writing and tell you who told me. That's all I did.
So, all right, are we okay with that? We, we bring the resolution out of Health Service and Safety at the next council meeting? And if we vote, you know, if we vote it down, then our assumption is we're, the city of Van Wert is going to stay with the state. And if we go forward with it, obviously, I need to get you guys more information, but then, you know, obviously, the, the resolution says that we will be part of the county's building plan, building department. Does that sound reasonable?
I would say we're either going to hear back from those people, I don't know if we want it.
Okay. All right? So, that'd be, we'll go forward with that, so we'll know. We'll put this to bed, one way or the other, two weeks from today.
Maybe it'd be a good idea to know what the impetus was for this, this process. I mean, who's, who is having the problems and what are the problems?
I can ask that. I'll ask that. I'll include that in my question to the county commissioners. Warren's going to bring that up, yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I always heard, you know, Rager's sausage, getting out there to shell, that the whole up is caused of state inspections. Now, that's my two cents worth.
Yeah, that we-
I have no idea how true that is or not.
We've, we've heard that too. We've heard some of that kind of stuff too.
I've been listening to this over the last few weeks, and I'm thinking, you know, if that's how the state operates, why would we not want to change? But now, I hear it's a difference.
And I think there's a lot, when you're getting into food preparation and that sort of thing, I think it's a totally different ballgame than you deal with any other commercial building. I think as much the health department as it is the state.
Yeah, we, we've heard that too. We, but nobody's come in and told us exactly what it was.
I think there's a couple scenarios of why that's not open. The fire suppression was one. The other was the owner is, didn't want to open up just yet, he wanted to be there with the grand opening. And there's all sorts of stuff going on, so who knows?
Mr. Jerry. Oh, sorry, Mr. Jerry.
I didn't notice an economic advantage for any of them, whether you stayed around the other. I mean, if you're going to change God, I don't want to have, have a healthy rate. If you're going to change costs of contractors, there needs to be an incentive to change.
Yeah, and that, a lot of that kind of stuff came out in the letters. Okay. All right, anything else, Mr. Marshall?
No, I think if you read through these, there's some things that allude to the fact of, you know, why change a protocol if it's working for the contractors here now?
Yeah.
So, I think that's something that we all have to make a decision about.
And I would ask that everybody read, read all those letters and the communications forthcoming. All right, economic development, Mr. Warren Straley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I pass out to everybody, the City White Trash Day. If you don't have the word, is anyone have a question? We saw Johnny, it's a circle on mirrors, but-
Well, um-
When he pitched out.
So, here's the, here is the, I guess, written down, typed up offer from Youngs. So, basically, they are offering up to eighty ton, I guess.
If you want me to come over this with the guy?
Yeah, please.
This is my daughter Holly, my assistant, my office director-
Your boss.
That did all this for me, because I am back in old stone age, when it comes to computers and phones, I still own a flip phone. But anyways, I would like to get in on this, City White Trash Day. We would be open on a Saturday, eight to one. We're going to charge eighty dollars a ton. And Warren said he wanted a three thousand dollar limit. So, if we were to hit that limit, rest is on us. Well, you're not going to, we'd be charging anything over three thousand. And I'm going to have three employees on site, I'm fully insured through promorts. Everything you need to have, we have. And that's, there's not going to be no trash involved. It's all bulk appliance, whatever, and not-
The way we talk-
Solid waste is considered trash. C and D construction debris is what we're taking in. But of course, a washer and dryer is not.
We, we base, the way that we have talked about it is, is the non-regular bag, bagged regular trash doesn't count.
No.
It's basically anything but that.
That's solid waste.
Okay.
And no, it's just bulk stuff for people.
So, couches?
Curbs and just leave it, yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, they can bring her down and-
Okay, good.
They're going to have to go on scales and get weighed. We'll have a, we'll state-certified scales, hold nine yards, we'll have a ticket showing the weight, the dump, weigh out, and then we'll have our ticket. And it's only for city residents.
Correct.
You have to live, okay. I'm going to try, I'll be there, somebody will be there, me or my partner Steve, checking, we'll check driver's license. When they come in, where the processing starts, we'll catch them at the scales, whatever, go see your driver's license. And so, that'll maybe help curb county stuff.
What about commercial? May I ask a question?
Yeah. That was-
How you, you're going to, you're going to, this is for residents and non-commercial items.
Right, this is, I was going to get to that.
Okay.
There, there, just break. If you see on there, it says eligible dates in September fourteenth or twenty-eighth. And the reason being, the other two days, we have started now in the, we call it summer hours. We're opening two Saturdays a month for the public, commercial, public, whatever. And those two dates there are when we're not open that month on Saturday. But we want to open it up on one of those dates. That way, we're not going to be having commercial, public, and you'd be at just a cluster, you know, and everybody doesn't know who's who. So, this way, we know who's coming through them scales is, it's for this.
For residential.
Going to check IDs. By our logs and our rules anyways, we have to write down every license number that gets on that scale. We have to log that down. So, that's what my wife does down there.
So, you would, you would know if it's a commercial person at some point? Trying to sneak in?
We'll know, yeah. I mean, we know all the, most of the commercial people that use this have accounts.
Okay.
And she's got about four of these pages full of license numbers stacked up there, where you can-
Good.
Alexander Bevout, Bevout, whatever. So, those are the two dates I have in September, because we were talking about September, October. But I think the sooner would be the better, as due to the weather and things. Then, this bottom part where it says the owner or operator shall not accept the following at the facility. This is an EBA law rule, whatever, they, and it's funny, kind of, for, for where we're at and what we do. I had no idea, the very last one, to norms. Anybody know what a to norm is?
Okay, that's good.
That would be something, if you probably brought it down there, you'd be glowing that night. It has to do with radioactive waste and all of that.
Nope.
And, you know, we don't do any hazardous waste at all.
Okay.
But by all, this has to be posted on every building that's out there. So, we've got a big sign on that, big building, which nobody reads, and a smaller one on what we call a hut, where people pull up and look at the, some of the scales to that sign, and they, half of them don't even know it's there.
Okay.
But we'd really like to get in on this. We're part of the city too. And who would we come up and see? That's almost forty tons of trash at eighty dollars would be three hundred, thirty-two hundred. I honestly, I don't think you even will be close.
Okay.
I really don't.
Okay.
My number is what we do daily.
We just, and, and the reason for, the reason Warren asked for a dollar, top dollar amount is we need to be able to budget.
I know.
We just need to, so as long as we have, you know, if it's less than that, so that's even great for us, that's great, better for us.
Yeah, whatever it is, it is, we'll send you out a bill.
Okay.
We'll send you out a bill.
The-
And I don't, I just can't see it-
Okay.
Going over that much.
Well, that's, that's, that's good news. That, that's, makes it even more attractive, a more attractive option for me.
Rich, I have a question. I appreciate that offer to do this. And of course, this is going to be brought to you, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any thought about perhaps people who can't bring the items to you, would there be, you be able to pick it up and charge a cart each to bring things in to your facility?
Well, we've talked about that. Somebody had mentioned, not anybody of mine, but maybe you could get a couple city guys, compile a list, and they go out that day, run it around, and, and I'll tell you, they could even do it during a weekday if you, I know it's hard to let employees loose for, but they could go get something and bring it down, say, hey, you know, and then we would tack that on to-
Because that, that's the other piece of this.
And it really, to me, that it's more easier and, and more be able to keep track of it if it's all done between that eight and one.
Sure, completely.
And if it's, it pertains to you guys going out, a couple guys doing it, yeah, we can be there on two, three, whatever, but we're going to shut her down-
Sure.
At, at one o'clock, if that's what you guys want, to the public. But then like, if you got a couple guys going out, you know, I, I could do, but I'm going to have to charge, and I don't, I'm trying to stay away from, I have to help you guys. You know, I can't have two other guys come in and then start running all the trucks.
No, 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 no. We're just, we're just really brainstorming. We're just brainstorming.
You know?
My, my view is, this is the first time, well, this isn't the first time we've done a community-wide thing, but this is the first time that we are proposing something like this. Last time it was a grant, and, you know, it was, a lot of that was dictated to us. This is coming out of, you know, city funds.
Right.
And we're, we're trying to benefit the community, you know, and as, as much as I feel for the people that maybe not have a truck, I, in my mind, I'd rather just run this in September as is, and tell people, if you need help, find somebody with a truck. Rather, as, I'm afraid we're going to bite off more than we can chew. If we start promising people that we, that, you know, we're going to come get, you know, somebody's going to come get your couch if you put it on the curb. I don't want to, I don't want that to be out there. I'm, I'm thinking that we just, we, we keep it small and compact, and we say, this is a service. If you can get your stuff down to the transfer station, down to Youngs, you know, during these hours, it's completely, it, you know.
I think majority of the couches and the larger items that are sitting out there are still sitting out there because people can't, or don't have access to it.
Correct.
Or money.
Or, yeah.
And so, I, well, we can, we-
I, I get that a lot, right? You know, we don't have dumpsters available, so we have our transfer station, well, I don't-
I know. Well, I just don't know that we can promise something without delivering.
Well, I'm kind of with you on, I know Steve and some others were there on that grant day, and it seemed the transportation was not as big of a problem as it was just having a place to take it, that, I mean, people were coming in with their mattresses and their couches and things. At least for the first time till we, we get the kinks worked out.
Yeah, and if we do this, this time, and it, and it runs well, and the only concern that we have afterwards is, I didn't have a truck, then we could certainly do this in the spring again, and-
Figure something, figure it out.
And, and plan.
Right.
You know, plan on having some transportation. I'd just like to, to be honest, I'd like to keep it small, a little, you know, kind of small and tight, right now.
I really think it's going to go pretty smooth. And I know most of the years, probably Joe Meyer seemed to blaze. Had you dunked right inside, if they have a truck, whatever, then just push it on the floor and get, you know- And you dump right inside, if they have a truck, whatever, they'll just push it on the floor and get, get out of here. Or we can put them down where we have the dock and that dumpster's down in there where you back up-
Sure.
And you push it right off down in there. But most of them come in, just dump off and go. And we have guys in there with bobcats, moving, loading, crushing.
I think it's, I think it sounds like a-
Not responsible for black tires.
I think it's, I, I, I think it sounds like a good idea, but I'm, uh, just a voice, not a voting member. So, did any comments, questions from council?
There was one thing that was not on that. There was a flat fee of five hundred, and if one person shows up or a hundred people show up, cause they still have to pay their guys to be there until one o'clock.
No, no, no.
You took that off?
Yeah.
I thought that was, that was-
It's, it's gonna be, as an easy number, does say we collect a thousand pounds of trash that day, it's gonna be, um, well-
Eighty times whatever the tonnage is.
Ten times, yeah, times eighty.
Ten hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I'm, I hope I'm not shooting myself in the foot, but I honestly, but I don't see, I don't think we did that many times, thirty or whatever to, or forty, to make it close to three thousand.
You're allowed to shoot yourself in the foot, it's not me.
But I mean, uh-
What did we fill last time? Four?
Six tons.
Six thirty yard?
Yeah, and bulky stuff, wasn't it?
Yeah, but we crunched it down.
Well, we'll be believing in the drugs.
We didn't compact it, but it was crunched down.
We were pushing in the dumps, that's what our role was.
You, uh, yeah. But you're not paying by the dumpster.
Right, we're paying by-
No.
I think this is a good-
And you paid more than that. And it wasn't six times four or five hundred.
There was a grant, Rich, that was all-
Well, but it was, the grant was five thousand.
Yeah.
The grant was a five thousand something grant.
I think this is a good first start.
I, I think so too. I think, you know, we can keep it, this is a service that we're offering, and see how it goes and, you know, we can improve in the future.
Yeah, we can tweak things as we go with that, and I, I can't see it being real bad.
Okay, anybody, anybody else? I guess, so here's my, so here's what, now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the next step for us is to, is for Mr. Straley to ask for and have a resolution to approve this.
Correct, and appropriate the funds.
So, uh, the only thing, uh, the law director said that the, the twenty-eighth was-
It's the same date as the Harvest Moon Festival, I don't know if that matters.
Does that matter?
I mean, everybody in the evening- I think anything goes on before one, but-
Right, okay.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
I, I prefer the twenty-eighth, the only reason is it gives us two more weeks to tell people about it.
Yeah.
Just to, to communicate it, you know?
What, what kinda advertising are you gonna do? I'll, I, I have flyers up a boat to the city office and then we post things and for the community and-
As, as, as interesting as our meetings are, a lot of people actually, I think, do pay attention to the, the minutes and obviously the, the, the media will, will help us get that information out, or word of mouth and that type of stuff.
We put it on the website.
We put it on the website.
We got, I don't know what you call it, it's our website. We'll have her get something up on there.
Website's been trashing, Rich.
Because, yeah, Facebook, that type of stuff. Did you have a question before we?
I have a question. Once, once we know when the day is, the social media can be used according to your efforts.
Yeah, exactly. I, I, I really think people can, if, if they know ahead of time, I think-
Enough lead time.
I think with, with, you know, almost two months, I think I could probably find a truck if I needed to. Especially if it's free.
Oh, dumping, yeah.
Yeah, the dumping is free. So, I, I'm-
Two weeks too late for the third one.
You know, you're not specified, it's not trash, it's-
And, yeah, and that'll, yes.
Well, I must bring ID, uh, you know, driver license ID and-
That ought to be on here, Rich, you ought to put that on this card, you know, proof of residence, city card.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what if, I mean, you know, people are, what if somebody in your house is, here's the city limit, and here's their house?
Send them back over to, send them back to Middle Point.
But we, we run into that every now and then on delivering dumpsters, in town this, out of town that. Well, I'm just out of town a mile or two, I'm sorry, but some of these people's real close to the line and, you know, just kinda wondered about that, but if it's-
There's a-
Not a Van Work city, yeah.
Please, yes.
Down in city.
Yeah. Yep, that, that's the only, that's the only proper response. They haven't, they, they don't pay the taxes that we're using to contribute to the pay.
Okay, I'm gonna throw one more question. Is anybody gonna be there from the city?
We can be, people can be if need be, but we hadn't planned on it.
Just see how it goes, you know, just, you have better, you know-
Yeah, we can, you know, I can stop by, you know, we can, we can check things out, certainly.
Anybody has to be there at all, we can, this is what we do, you know, but you're more than welcome, I mean-
Okay.
To support the second day, maybe, would, would you be able to get that into two water bill announcements, or if we did the second day?
The twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
We could get this into September first bill.
Oh, it goes out, so like the August bill's already gone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I think, I don't think communication of this would be, will be a problem.
Maybe a copy of the water bill they need to bring in for proof of-
Something.
Yeah, something that's got their address on it.
I, I know exactly what's gonna happen. Uncle Joe from Ohio City is gonna come over to, you know, his brother's place or whatever, who lives in Van Work.
He's got the trailer.
Right.
And they're, but, you know, there are people, there-
Play the game.
And it's not, you know, we're working on, you know, a lot of it's the honor system and there's some dishonorable people out there.
Oh, boy.
And everything that you, you know, everything that you do, you're gonna have dishonorable people, so, I-
If you can't combat it all.
Yeah, you can't, yeah.
We'll do our best, but we would appreciate, uh-
Well, we, we appreciate the offer and, Mr. Straley?
Can we get a resolution to approve and incorporate the fund for the Citywide Trash Day on the twenty-eighth of September? Does that need to be on emergency?
Yes, yes.
On emergency.
Okay, so we have a request for a resolution to appropriate the funds for the twenty-eighth on an emergency basis. Uh, so basically, it'll word, you'll word it maximum of three thousand dollars?
Yes, thank you.
Maximum, and then, if anything up to that point, we'll cut a check. Okay, all right, second by Mr. Egler, any questions? Veronica, please call the rule.
Mr. Straley?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Markward?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Trichu?
Yes.
Great, so, uh, next meeting, we will be able to finalize that, we don't have it. So we'll, uh, we'll be able to run it through next meeting, and then we'll, we'll be ready to go.
Awesome.
Okay?
I appreciate that.
Well, we appreciate it, you know, we, this is, I think this is, I think this is a nice first step. We, we, we constantly, constantly hear about people that we want them to help clean up their property, clean up their property. And I think this is a, a reasonable step to help people clean up their property. And I think, I hope people take advantage of it.
I, uh, I don't know if I missed the ball or what happened last year, but I really didn't realize it until it was like too late.
That was a county thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Love it.
Yeah. But we appreciate, we appreciate you stepping up. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And, uh, so you'll, you, you can come back next, in two weeks, or just watch, watch, we'll contact you.
We'll put something up, dude, advertising down there, please.
Before you start advertising, I, Joey mentioned, since we're saying we're not taking any bagged trash, let's not prolong this right now, but we probably need a better name than Trash Day. Cause we don't want people to bring trash. So think about that.
Why don't we just call it City Cleanup?
That's a good point, that's real good.
Why don't we just call it City Cleanup Day?
That's for, like, that's in furniture and household.
Yeah.
And we get no bagged trash.
Yeah, no bagged trash.
So, do those people, the way they think they happen, back into their trick up, pickup truck, pulling just trash? No bags?
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, uh, probably, okay.
All right, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, excellent, excellent, anything else, Warren?
Yeah, I didn't write fast enough in that, in that folder, I need to make a motion to extend the, the date to September twenty, thirtieth, twenty twenty. What, what does that need?
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, we need to make a motion to amend the Community Reinvestment Area Agreement.
CRA?
The CRA, uh, with the, and it's The Edition LLC, located at, at their offices are two twenty-three North Washington Street.
And that's till what, nine twenty of twenty?
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty of twenty twenty.
Ten thirty of twenty.
No, it's a, here's, it says, it says September of twenty twenty, in red. It just says-
Right above there.
It says completed by September thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Yeah, that's what I got, okay.
So-
I'll make that motion, um, to make an amendment to the CRA agreement for the addition LLC, to just extend that date until September thirtieth of twenty twenty.
On an emergency.
On an emergency.
Okay, does everybody understand what we're doing? Are they good? Huh? He's not, uh, they're not done yet.
They don't have enough time.
They, they, they haven't finished by the deadline, so we're giving them an extra year to finish the work so that it qualifies for the CRA.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Okay, second by Mr. Egler. Please call the rule.
Mr. Straley?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Markward?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Trichu?
Yes.
And that concludes my report.
All right, any questions for economic development? Thank you, Warren, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Joel Penton?
Very short report tonight, everything is going well, no problems, uh, mowing or trash pickup or anything like that. It is possible that when the, like last year, when we lose a temporary summer health, that we'll have a few weeks where we could need some more volunteers, but we don't know that yet, but it is possible. That concludes my report.
All right, any questions for Parks and Recreation? Thank you, Joel, Property and Equipment, Mr. Jeff Egler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, two weeks ago, Stacy was in here talking about that rail spur to the mega site, and we wanna make that one owner go into Port Authority. And, uh, so ours is gotta go through the CIC, so I'd like to have, uh, have the law director prepare an ordinance that would make that happen.
You wanna just prepare, right now, just prepare, on an emergency basis?
On emergency, yes.
So we have a, a motion to prepare an ordinance to facilitate the, uh, transfer ownership from the city of Van Work to the CIC for the, our portion, our own, own portion of the rail spur, on an emergency basis. Second by Mr. Straley? It's thirty-nine.
Oh, thirty-nine.
Okay? So it's Mr. Egler, Mr. Straley, any questions? This is just, we don't have, we don't have the, all of the legality done yet, we're just preparing the ordinance to get it started. Okay, all right, please call the rule.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Straley?
Yes.
Mr. Markward?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Trichu?
Yes.
That concludes my report.
Okay, any questions for, uh, Property and Equipment, from council, from the public? Thank you, Jeff, Judiciary and Annexation, Mrs. Joy Mergie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Apparently, there's, um, House Bill forty-nine, um, we've discussed before, which centralizes the municipal income tax collection through the state of Ohio. We wanted to support the opposition to this House bill. My question is, did I request this?
Okay. We received something through the Ohio Municipal League last week, so you did not request it at the last meeting.
Okay.
The, uh, there's a group of municipalities that have filed, um, an appeal, uh, to the Ohio Supreme Court, where this case will be litigated and pending, and, and this is basically us lending our support as, as one of the municipalities, the city, but not a party to the lawsuit, um, uh, to that position. And there, there will probably be other cities doing the same thing we're doing, um, that aren't, that aren't one of the named parties, but are a party that are affected by the outcome of that lawsuit. And I, I think, uh, I think it's important that everybody that's affected has a chance to be heard. It's one of those kind of scenarios. Um, and, and what we would be doing, um, should this pass, is a copy of this would go to our state representative, our state senator and our state representative, to show them where our position is on this. And further, that a copy would be forwarded to, um, council that's representing the, the, the parties that are opposing this. Just so they know, just so they know, you know, that other affected municipalities are, are a part of all of this.
Does everybody understand what, what, what this actually means? The state wants, the state wants, rather than our city income tax coming here, the state wants all city income taxes to go to Columbus and then divvy it up and give us back our taxes less, uh, I think right now it's one percent, but less a percentage for their administrative fees, and then decide how much money we get to operate on. And it goes, it goes completely against that concept that Stan Egler kept hammering in my head, home rule, home rule, home rule.
And, and, and House Bill forty-nine isn't a complete centralization takeover. Right now, it's, it's the-
Capital gains.
Capital gains and, and, and some corporate taxes.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, but it's, it's the start down that road.
It's the snowball at the top of the-
Correct. Correct.
So this suit, excuse me, but this suit is only after the capital gains tax right now, it doesn't have anything to do with-
It's actually pursuing the law that's already in effect. It's, it's, it's challenging the constitutionality, um, and the issue at, at hand is whether, um, House Bill forty-nine violates the home rule provision of the Ohio Constitution.
So if that goes down, then we're looking good on-
The, the other ones are probably not gonna, not gonna succeed.
They, they won't, yeah.
They wouldn't vote.
They'd be less likely to bring them forward, yeah.
Okay. So based on that, I'd like to make a motion, a resolution be prepared, um, supporting the municipalities in opposition to House Bill forty-nine, um, and that it be prepared as an emergency.
Okay, we have a motion to prepare resolution as an emergency, second by Mr. Egler. Any, any other questions? Please call the rule.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Markward?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Straley?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Trichu?
Yes.
Okay, since, um, oh, the law director has prepared Resolution nineteen zero eight zero four zero, I'd like to introduce it before council.
Okay, we have a motion, or, sorry, motion to introduce Resolution nineteen zero eight zero four zero. Second by Mr. Egler. Please call the rule.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Markward?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Straley?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Trichu?
Yes.
Since the resolution was prepared as an emergency, I'd like to make a motion, statutory rules be suspended.
Okay, motion to suspend, second by Mr. Egler. Call the rule.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Markward?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Straley?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Trichu?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, resoluc- Resolution nineteen zero eight zero four zero be passed on its first and final reading.
Okay, second by Mr. Egler. Please, uh, read the resolution and call the roll.
Resolution number nineteen dash zero eight dash zero four, Bureau of Resolution from the Van Wert City Council, supporting the many Ohio municipalities in opposition to HB forty-nine and the current Ohio Supreme Court, challenging its constitutionality and declaring it an emergency.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Markworth?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Straley?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Trichu?
Yes.
Um, also, I have been in contact with, um, Mr. Gary Hunter regarding the, um, charter government. We had it narrowed down to a few dates that he could come and present to council again. And I believe it's going to be August twenty-ninth at six, so please keep that date open, but I don't have final confirmation yet.
That's a Thursday, correct?
That's a Thursday.
Yes, that's a Thursday. He gave me three dates and that was the one that John and I could attend. So hopefully everyone can attend, um, and hopefully I get the final approval that he's gonna be there very soon, so.
Twenty eighth, August what?
Twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth.
We've got a, we've got a, August, we got a meeting over there, right state.
And I do too, but.
Yeah, that.
Till six.
That's during the day.
Should be one to four.
The, the problem is, is every other date I was out of town. Every, every other date that he was off, that he was open, I was completely unavailable, that was the only one that I can make it back from.
What time is it, I'm, I'm sorry?
Six.
Six, okay, should we, we'll be done long before six over there?
Yeah.
Four o'clock, we'll be out of there.
Here? Yes, here. We'll, we'll confirm that, we'll all confirm it, uh, that'll be, I will call that officially, that'll be a, a council of the whole, so it'll be open, uh, it'll be open to the public, it'll be council of the whole. We just need to, yeah, we have to advert, we'll have to advertise it, uh, but I, once we get confirmation, just let me know and then we'll take, we'll take the, and officially mark it.
That concludes my report.
Okay, uh, any questions for Judiciary and Annexation, council, from the public?
Did, did, uh, did the United Southern plan it in, in a central election, about a year ago?
That was.
I think we did, but I don't think it's our district that was, is the one that's appealing, I don't think it's the third district, there's more than one district court where this was challenged.
This was raised in multiple districts. Yes, but yeah, you're correct, we are.
Yeah.
A plaintiff in one of those.
Yeah, but I don't think we're a plaint, we're not a plaintiff in the case that is pending. It might, yeah.
And.
I guess, yes, that's what I'd.
And just a, just a, just a point of order, you'll bring us back the resolution to sign and then your office will send out the resolution to the.
I can, yeah.
Just to verify, just if you would take care of sending it to the, uh, the representative in the senate and, uh, you know, just handle that, please.
Of course, yes.
I guess the question would be, why wouldn't we give a plan of, of the date, because if they can take an inch, they're gonna take the whole foot, they're gonna go back and try to pencil it out.
And that's, and that's the reason why we're in the position we are, but the, the, the case was brought in multiple, um, state, state, uh, appellate courts. We're just, we don't happen to be a party to the actual one that's before the Supreme Court, but yes, we are an affected party, which is what I'm trying to say, which is why we're, we're raising this in support to make sure that our voice is heard by somebody.
Okay, all right, thank you, Joy, uh, finance, Mr. Ken Markworth.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report tonight.
Any questions for finance from council, from the public? Thank you, Ken, Streets and Alley, Mr. Steve Trichu.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I received a letter requesting signs at the East Main and Wayne Street and Zimmerman intersections, uh, because of kids playing in the area and riding bikes. Um, I've been by there several times, I haven't seen any kids present, um, but I spoke with the Safety Service Director about it and it's kind of the city stance that we don't put those signs up.
Right.
Because they.
They're just kind of crying wolf signs, people just get them, they just ignore them and there's kids everywhere.
All right.
Potentially.
Yeah, I tried to return a call, uh, there was no answer and no voicemail.
Okay, all right.
I have a comment. Uh, first of all, thank you, Steve, thank you, Jay, for the, having the trailer, arranging to have the trailer put up on Monte Carlo. And did you get a ticket? No, I didn't get a ticket, but you do notice when people are driving in the, you do notice the difference between people driving the direction where they can see how fast they're driving and people driving the opposite direction where they can't see, when, when there isn't a sign flashing at them how fast they're driving. It's actually very interesting to watch from, from afar, because I don't have any houses blocking my view of the street, so I, I can sit on my, my patio and watch it going in both directions, it's actually kind of fascinating. But, but thank you for, for setting that up and, and helping the walkers in our, in our neighborhood, thank you.
Is it still out there?
Yes, true.
Okay.
All right, but it is pretty neat to watch.
Then the next item, uh, Bill, do you have any update on the Purple Heart parking space?
Well, yes, I mean, I think that we've decided that they will be on Main Street and, uh, it will either, there's two corners that we can consider. And that is the corner, the northwest corner or the northeast corner, that'd be the end slots. And, um, I think personally, I, I like the first slot on the northwest corner. I'm sorry, it would be the northeast corner, that's my preference, but, uh, the reason it's, it's a, it's a drive-in slot as opposed to a backing in slot if you were on the, on the other end of Main Street.
Correct.
Uh, so, uh, we're, we're ready to go, if, if the council approves, we're ready to, uh, complete the prob, the, the process.
I, I would agree with that parking spot. Talking about the one by baggage, the crosswalk is already painted, they've already got that crosswalk painted, it's that first one right there where a guy can just pull in there. And there's already a post there that, that's got a sign on it, they, you wouldn't have to put a post up, there's already a post.
Right next to the Veterans Service Office as well, in the courthouse.
Well, I mean. But it's on Main Street, right in front of the courthouse, like the first spot?
First spot.
Right.
Okay.
For this east spot.
In order to, so.
Courthouse side.
Administration seems fine with it, I. I think, uh, you know, we just need an ordinance to designate it. That, I mean, just officially, I would prefer, rather than just randomly painting the street, we probably want to pass an ordinance and. We need to. Because if we're just painting streets, I want my own spot someplace too. Uh, any other more than honor code?
I, I realize that, but I kind of missed this, I think it was the last meeting, I wasn't here.
Oh.
I'm just trying to.
There's not, there, you really, we really don't have the means to penalize somebody for inappropriately parking, I mean, it's more, it's more respect and honor.
That's not true, I just was trying to fill in the gaps for not being here.
Yeah, there's nothing in the other. I'd prefer to tow their car and then smash it up, but that, we're not allowed to do that, so.
Any other discussion on it or any?
Well, and remember, it's a Purple Heart spot, it's not a handicap spot.
Right, yes.
You have to have that designation on your driver, on your license.
Yep.
Well, that brings up a question, is it enforceable in a way that a handicap spot is?
No.
No.
Not even if we make an ordinance?
We could have an ordinance to designate it that and, and if we really wanted to put fines in place for people parking against it, I guess we could.
We got.
Like we could any other parking.
Right.
Designation, but.
I'd. A no parking zone is enforceable.
Precisely, or parking in restricted hour zone.
The fire hydrant, the handicap.